This meeting and playing point City of Elizabeth will now have to order. This meeting and the playing point City of Elizabeth in the 12th day of July 2012 is the newly advertised provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. NJS A 10, only four days six as a specially scheduled meeting published as part of the act of meetings scheduled. Notice that this meeting is a deferred to Starlight on Friday January 27, 2012. Notice that the cases included will also publish in Starlight there at least 10 days in four today. Martin, please call the role.
I'm Mr. Longman. Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Pabellum, Commissioner Cavendish, Commissioner Melish. Commissioner Brown, Secretary Urban, Commissioner Chalcoss, Commissioner Duvan, Vice Chairman Ross, Director of the Department.
Here, Martin, please pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands here, by its nation, by its law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes of the Tuesday scheduled meeting through your package and motions without them. Motion by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Vice Chairman Ross. Martin, please call the role.
Commissioner Gonzalez, please your notes.
I'm saying.
Commissioner Brown. Aye. Commissioner Chancellor. Vice Chairman Ross.
Aye. We have before us a resolution CRD 0112 in the matter of the New Jersey church fight. Block one, block ten, ten A located mile post 101.3 north of Dow Avenue. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Martin, please call the role.
Commissioner Gonzalez, aye. Commissioner Brown, aye. Commissioner Chalcoss, vice chairman of small, chairman of small.
Aye. Okay, before we get into the development of view hearings, we have important amendment to amend and supersede the City of Elizabeth's way of developing control where this is as follows. Subsection 17.6.00C prevailing conditions and section 17.6.03B is employed temporary track office and section 17.36.20, 020, 17.26.030, 17.36.080, 17.36.100 lot dimensions, 17.36.110 yard dimensions, 17.36.125, 17.36.160C minimum square foot for commercial space and 17.36.080 size. This is the neighbor?
Yes, the neighbor. This ordinance is, uh, the exact same ordinance that previously approved that White House has supported as far as preventing conditions and yard conditions, not areas. What it's doing is it's setting, uh, every time we have a ban for front yard setbacks, most of the new homes, two families in the center of Elizabeth, have a twenty-foot front yard setback. It's looking at how it goes from the street, did you park, park in the yard or in the house? They're having that, so it's going to back. So it's sort of requiring that we request to vary it, the front yard we're setting minimum twenty yards of twenty feet. Right now, if it's up twenty feet, it's whatever the block averages. So we're set a, set the front yard setback where we don't have it now. You know, the conditions of the laws on the emergency and, uh, also the fire ordinance in here, saying that right now the ordinance lets the properties go away to the property line. We're setting a minimum side yard of three feet, one inch. That's the minimum set by the International Building Code for firing windows. Uh, but this ordinance also takes the separation between two structures in the city will be five feet. Uh, again, we call that fire or access to the fire department. So that technically is not a number that is currently, we're looking to place these fire separations. The ordinance now. Um, the yard dimension, which I was at, this ordinance, again, previously recommended, set up the council in some way, shape, form, was never adopted by council. So we're resetting it. This time we're muddling the package along with what this board has previously done. The new construction, professional construction, the director of the department, uh, has asked my department to grant the ordinance temporary, temporary track offices. Then they have a condition, right now we have nothing in the ordinance about temporary offices. Uh, so this will cover people that need temporarily located office during situations of fire, flood, another condition, so right now the construction department has nothing in the ordinance to go by it. This will give us something in the ordinance. Also requested by ready, the construction department. Whereas the specifics on swimming pools, he's getting a lot more, uh, requests for swimming pools. And on page six are just some items, they need more or less a minute, the construction code, but, uh, the construction department has asked the city and asking the planning office to, and really reiterate what the construction code already said, to place that in the ordinance. So those items, six, conditions for commercial, I'm sorry, man. Um, there's one other item. Currently in the city, uh, there is section, there's section six also. And section six is minimum square foot for commercial space. This came up immediately had with the Elizabeth apartment share, and was having said, and towards the Rodswood, uh, commercial concern, that storefronts were being further subvived to very, very small spaces. Only ten by twenty. Supposedly there was a store that was ten by ten. So to prevent that, we're setting a minimum of five hundred square feet to replace any minimum amount of commercial space that a store could be, uh, some lease. So now, uh, we do not have something like that in the ordinance. There also is a different shortage, most stores are twenty foot, most retail spaces are about twenty-five. And normally there's a fifty-two feet, more retail space than that of square feet. We're still being very liberalistic and permitting stores to go down to five hundred square feet. So the small, existing shops, right now they have zero listed in the report, so. Uh, that's it. And that's a request that can refer to someone, to the city and for Elizabeth's special improvement district. Also, one of the meetings I had in the past, the special improvement district, were the signs. Uh, we're changing some aspects of the sign ordinance, permitting, if you have a corner store, they can assign on each side, it's a corner store. Uh, also, uh, canopies and marquees that had to be, they're there. The bottom of the marquee, the body of the, uh, the quining, the street. We've had, since the quining heights, uh, was then recommended less than six feet. So we're now specifying eight feet the ordinance. This is to assist the construction department in forcing of marquee signs to allow three hundreds on the avenue or on Rodswood. So I'll wish to the first chance to cover everything. Uh, the first section is the track offices. That is, track offices are really towards temporary offices that are submitted and reached the division of the mission of that. Added by the last amendment, which we, or that previously approved, I was sending it back out to the council. In a package. Hopefully it doesn't get pulled out. Thirty-four meetings, again, is what is previously approved at two occasions. Uh, recommended, we want to reiterate that for the city council. Also, fire tools, as you put it, the next item, minimum square foot. One other item here. Uh, I said the minimum amount of space in commercial, right now, right now our ordinance is not stated in the minimum size issue of a commercial property in City of Elizabeth. So we're limiting the ordinance in C1, C2, C3, C3A, C4, F1 and F2 zones. But a lot of it has to be at a minimum, uh, five thousand square feet, which is not much. Five thousand square feet is only a fifty by one hundred lot. But, uh, you, most lots don't come in less than that because they can't be the department required. But there is not a minimum standing in the city, which is very surprising. So we're looking to place a very nominal amount of square foot, it's only a fifty by one hundred. The minimum lot size for commercial lot. That's to prevent subvival of commercial property from smaller lots. So with the help of the house, we have house planning, keeping ordinance, um, a recommendation, a request for a recommendation of this to go to council. And also, who works on that process, is a new ordinance question, bill board is on, moving the signs in the city. My office work with Mr. Mac and I. Now, Mr. Mac and I work with this officially, from a period back, you say, that the letting work with the man higher office. On the new ordinance, it's a recommendation, it's a recommendation, and then the fire department.
Commissioners, are there any questions on this post-ordinance that we will send the city council to rectify some of the problems that this board has seen? Uh, things that we've talked about for quite a long time finally getting ratified, Commissioner? Is there a motion to send this to council?
I have a motion to send it to council.
Motion by Commissioner, seconded by Commissioner, Secretary Urban. Martin, please call the role.
I'm Mr. Longman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Melish.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown. Aye. Secretary Attorney Urban. Aye. Commissioner Chalcoss.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ross. Chairman Hahn.
Aye. Okay, pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Neigler. Uh, first of all, I was remiss, welcome back, Councilor. It's good to see you and glad you're well, and that you're back on the board and having you champion this ordinance for us of the city council.
Governor, I have early vows, can you stay here for a little?
Okay, we'll try to leave it alone. That's been on my control. P O seven eleven. Ross.
Good evening, Inspector Roberts, Ross, and Charles. Good evening, Inspector Roberts, Roberts, and Roberts are presenting the party on New York terminals and then Joe Cal and Joyce, by the way. Um, it was, and I do have some other remarks, my understanding, very year, uh, two months, yeah, two months ago. There were several issues that the board has just looked into, five that I can read off the top of my head. There were five issues that come to mind. First issue was regarding previous violations or just violations, fire control. And we had addressed those, and I believe they've been all taken care of. And I understand that that would be the presentation of my client, and I understand that for the fire department. The second issue was issues related to traffic in the area. And the reconfiguration of the plan would cover certain traffic, if it were traffic off the street and the scale would regard to on the size of an equipped. The next issue is about drainage matters, and that my client was agreeing to, that he had resolved some issues regarding the mega firm, and had agreed to do the drainage in the area which had been recommended. The next issue was about fire hydrants, and my client was agreeing to place a plant for the fire control. And the last was that there would be scales on the property which went along with the traffic issues. And so those were the five issues that I can recall all again, for the major issues in this particular case from the internal.
These conversations took place when Mr. Neigler?
Yes, they did.
Mr. Neigler? Swear, Mr. Neigler.
I do, yes. Victor E. Venager, 320 North Avenue, American Village.
After the last meeting, two months ago, there were several open issues, as you heard Mr. Roberts say, and we suggested that New York terminal meet you. Has that been taken place?
Yes, it has.
Have all the open issues been resolved?
Yes, it has.
I do, uh, swear, Mr. Neigler. I O I A, I swear, I can testify, I mean, thank you, state of the game, thank you very much. First name Joseph, last name I O I A, one thirty-nine, Hot, Hoxton. One thirty-nine, Hot, Hoxton, H O C K E N, H O C K E N, S O N, R O B, Colson, we go. Zero seven seven two two.
Let's see, starting off with, would you tell us your position with New York terminals and Joe Cal?
On your role of both operations.
It's been your application to make some changes regarding the original site that had been approved by this board several months ago. Correct, would you again just explain to the board what those changes are in general?
Basically, we had a tank construction change where we reduced the tank storage capacity and increased the number of tanks that we originally planned to build.
Lieutenant Roberts, what is on New York terminals property?
We, uh, we are a public storage facility, uh, tank farm facility offering public storage to independent clients.
Independent?
Independent clients. Now, if you go to, uh, New York terminals, uh, there was an application that you made to develop. When you originally came before the board back in February and March, it was to expand the use of the property and develop a certain portion of the property that you have on Front Street to develop a terminal.
Could you explain to the board again what it is that you're seeking to do at that time? And then would you ask you here to tell us what the difference is and what the changes are that you're seeking to do now?
We had, we had a big computer marketing, which we requested to build six new storage tanks. Um, there were four fifty thousand barrel tanks and two twenty thousand barrel tanks for public storage.
A request to change to develop different types of tanks and different number of tanks. Would you explain what the difference is and why you made that change?
Based upon the customers' request, we reduced the storage capacity from four fifty thousand barrel tanks to two. And then, um, took the other two fifty thousand barrel tanks and converted them to four twenty thousand.
In addition to that, uh, do you, are you now seeking to put scales that would measure weights of vehicles on, right outside of the Baker Street, Cliff Street? So would you explain to the board what it is that you're seeking to do with regard to these scales?
Originally, we have set scales on the opposite side of the street. Customers that normally take product out by rail requested that rather than go across the street, create a traffic magnet, we installed scales adjacent to the tanks. So if the occasional levels that we had measured with the railroad, we would easily get the product out in the trucks and not tie the traffic on South Mountain.
Is that an additional expense that you are so encouraged to create this, uh, this of safety?
Yes, I do.
And now, in addition to that, there were, there's a request to put in, it's a fire safety, a fire hydrant. Would you describe to the board what it is that you requested to do with what you planned?
Uh, the meeting with fire official, his request was that since we were going to, we had Cliff Street. Uh, he felt that the current fire hydrant was not close enough to the new tank farm. And he requested additional fire hydrant soul. We took his recommendation and with Mr. Venager's advice, we picked the spot out and we now have a plan as to where we're going to put the fire.
And is your intention to place another fire hydrant so that it would be in the proper space directed by the fire?
Yes.
Next, there was some issues from where you were here last time regarding fire hydrants. Would you describe what they're marketed, how they're taken care of, and if they exist today?
There were violations that we issued in 2011, that were addressed in the 2012. Um, unfortunately, they were not brought up today by the fire department. They were completely addressed, violations were completely taken off of our file in February of 2012.
Next, there was an issue regarding traffic on that Front Street going back and forth. Uh, and I understand when you were here last time, you had approvals, there was a report from the police department that described one of many problems that was created by your companies. Would you describe what you're familiar with?
Traffic issue, uh, originally was thought of being, you know, terminals which actually moves to our neighborhood. In conversations with Mr. Venager, I was speaking to the board on the issue of traffic, the scales. And he confirmed that we are in, we are zoned properly for the scales and only want to do, and we not have any traffic issues.
In fact, in the first meeting, I think there was a report from the police department that the issues were not yours.
That is correct.
Would you describe to the board what you remember of that, and what issues you were, how they were resolved by this department?
Lieutenant Doobie, uh, approached the board and testified that it was an error, at least upon his half behalf, that the company that really has the issue of traffic is Oracle and not New York terminals.
Now, the last major issue regarding, and I'm aware of what your plans are to achieve, there's a certain drainage issue that were being addressed and were approved before, and now a request being made to drain into the art of killer. Would you describe to the board what the, what the drainage was before, what you requested, and what you've done now?
Originally, our plans were to take the drainage for the, the spot and tie it into the city stormwater, stormwater system. We felt that it was okay, Mr. Venager did not feel it was a good idea. So with his help and, uh, his request to have us go and now discharge the emergency on the killer. Uh, no, we didn't keep people to do that. Uh, we agreed to do it, we changed it, we drained it, we're in an estimate supply, which is our asset. And we will discharge the stormwater into the killer twice for the dividing.
And you completed an application to the PDP, to my knowledge. And you are willing to conform to the request and suggestion by Mr. Venager regarding this discharge?
Yes, sir.
There was also an issue, if I remember correctly, with regard to routine involved, and that they had been changed. Would you describe to the board what the change, what the rules that will be placed in the property for safety?
Um, actually, we replaced that for more containment. Originally, the mold's going to be concrete. Uh, we found it was impossible to do the concrete because of the footings. We did an onsite material change and notified the town building market, which was the steel. We switched with the steel and agreed to, um, paint the steel, whatever color the tablet light and suggested we put a name on the, uh, steel plate to it at the front of the terminal.
And you agreed to do that, and you've taken action to that?
Yes.
Doing that, that made it a sound, meaning the containment would be, uh, with the same integrity as the concrete walls?
Yeah, there's no difference, in fact, most of the major tanks that you see under the areas of term like are contained with steel.
And would you describe simply how they're placed into the ground so that the board has some understanding of how the containment works?
There are, um, forty-foot ivies that are piled in the ground, approximately thirty feet with the bedrock. And then we have half-inch steel tank by toilet plates that are devoted to the ivies. And, um, basically contains the whole facility. I have nothing further, Mr. Neigler.
Can you sure if you heard Mr. Neigler's testimony, are there any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. How you doing, guys? First of all, uh, you're gonna wind up with two scales, one on each side of the street, correct?
Actually, this will be three scales.
Three scales, okay, three. When the vehicle comes to fill his truck, his tanker, whatever you want to call it, you're, you fill from the existing tanks that are there, you thirteen tanks you're gonna pull up. You have, your primary, primary product is what, increase?
No, we have no real primary product. Each client has a different product, it could be ultra low sulfur diesel, it could be asphalt. It's up to the client what the product is coming to us.
Okay, so it's not fuel, it's not increase?
No, increase, we don't store increase.
Okay. So if a truck does come up and he's being filled, do you, do you fill him from one particular tank or depending on when you, yeah, you don't do mixtures?
That needs something applying as to what tank we're gonna pull out.
The reason I'm asking the question is that if you have three scales and one is on the opposite side of your facility. And two will be on your facility. Now, when the one's on the opposite side, that's where the rares.
Just, yeah, the scale, one scale was on the other side of the Front Street. The other side is South Fortune, which is on the other side of the railroad tracks, right?
And so that particular scale, uh, when a truck comes there, is filling from the railroad cars, right?
No, actually, he can, he can be filled from anywhere on the terminal and basically that scale would just use for waiting. We don't fill from that scale. No, but you can't, we can't put a truck on that scale and load from that scale, there's no loading ramp.
So, what, so you have three scales, it's possible you can have three different tanks filling at the same time?
Two.
Two filling at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the council and the board, maybe this broker was always concerned when you came back, oh, I don't. Oh, I don't know, it was cold out there, whatever, we were here initially. His concern, his main concern was the traffic in his ward in that area of Front Street. Now, the bridge is out, that's still longer. You only have one way to go, you have to go back under the office bridge and go across another way. Primary, now that you can fill two trucks at the same, at the same time, correct?
If the need is there, the scales are, it's more business of, you'll fill twenty if the need was there.
But the point being, you have the facilities to fill a lot of trucks, that's okay, that's not a big deal. Okay? And our concern was the traffic, the trucks going through residential areas.
Correct.
The one, the bridge, when the bridge was up, it was impossible, the truck drivers, when they're at, they're going to take the shortest route back. And that was the main concern of the council in that area, was the traffic in his ward. And that was the concern that we, we have had. And did you do any, and do any shifts, and do any bards, just to fill off your facilities, do it?
Yes.
So you have two, two sources of pumping your liquid, one into a bar and the other to trucks?
Correct. Initial internal element of the.
And the drain, and the opposite, okay.
Personal way for us, you know, the financial way for us to make money would be efficient is railcar and ship.
Right, well, they'll take the most basic.
Correct.
Okay. And it's not anything, I must have read some wrong, though it's cooler that you were primary. Is the product that you source landable?
No.
None of it's landable?
We're in fulfilling with the fire.
It's alright.
No, I'm just saying, we, you know, the primary products, current name of the terminal is ultra low sulfur diesel. Ultra low sulfur diesel, biodiesel, and asphalt.
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 Okay, well, us being all laypeople, we're concerned about, there was an incident many years ago. Now, I hear a council, there was a fire down the right over the bridge. That a lot of our fire people are still suffering from it in that situation. And that's the reason why, as a layperson, again, we're cautious, we're concerned about our residents here. We're just residents, we're not in your business. We rely, we decided to rely a lot of Victor DeNey to give us the okay, this is the way it should be. We just ask questions so that the laypeople can understand what you guys are doing. And we wish you all the best in the world and hope you're successful. Long as this stuff doesn't hurt the city of Elizabeth. Now, you employ anywhere for ten to twenty people or various? You have ten to twenty employees?
Oh, at least.
At least, okay, you work seven days a week, you're five days?
Seven days, twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. Okay. The bottom?
Thank you. Any other commissioners, can I get a question for the council before I go to testimony, Mr. DeNey? You've heard Mr. DeNey's testimony, there is another witness here, the engineer. Have any questions for the engineer, we can bring him up, if not, any commissioners should speak to the engineer. Nothing personal against the engineer.
Post-wards, again, any issues that have the engineer, he has that, and regarding the other ones as well. Okay, this is a project. It's a project that he is good for the city, he will supply a technician individuals. He will become very grateful for the city. Mr. DeNey has sought to make sure that everything is working properly. He has built a great facility, put a lot of money in here. Put a lot of effort and time to make sure that it's sustained at the art facility. He believes that he has complied with each and every one of the requests from fire, traffic, drainage, scales, fire hydrants, and the containing areas. And so he requests that the site line be approved, then be approved so that it can continue in building a great facility here.
Is there anyone in the ordinance, a member of the public, who has any comments regarding this application, if so, please come forward. Seeing none, commissioners, what's your call?
I will do the application.
By Commissioner Mullins, seconded by Vice Chairman Ross. Martin, please call roll.
Councilman Holden?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Mullins?
Aye.
Commissioner Urban?
Aye.
Commissioner Chalkoff?
Aye.
Vice chairman Ross?
Aye. And before the act of these, I want to make a comment too. On behalf of the city, the fire department's disinformation to us last month cost us some time. But I know from Mr. DeNey, that you were very accommodating to what Mr. DeNey meant. The meeting that took place should take place a long time ago, and we're in the city here two years later. So we wish you all the best in the bottom, in your endeavors in Boston City.